That kind of splits them up evenly almost.
Yeah. So, are we on?
We are.
Okay. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee G.
Here.
Trustee McKnight.
Here.
Mayor Newhart.
Here.
Trustee Bachman and trustee Foster are absent this evening.
May I have a motion to accept the minutes of July 18th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion for authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of $161,157.18.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a couple announcements and we're going to divvy them up. Barry, do you want to make the first one?
Sure. The Village of Warwick Department of Public Works is recognized in the New York State LTA Peace Center Cornell Local Roads Programs, 2022 Build a Better Mouse Trap Competition for their outstanding achievement and innovation in the development of the Finsboni, named after DPW employee Mike Finelli, who with the help of John Santiago and Justin Trone created this display of ingenuity. And just to go into it a little further, the department, this is a press release, the department displayed exemplary ingenuity in the development of its Finsboni. The Village of Warwick's Finsboni allows them to keep their village ice skating rink safe for residents to use in the winter months. This innovation saves the DPW hours of manpower while delivering a smooth surface for skating. The program Build a Better Mouse Trap Competition is a statewide contest for New York State Highway and Public Works Departments, held annually to discover and share creative innovations to solve everyday problems. Entries are judged under the criteria of cost, implementation, transferability, and commonality of the problem solved. Winners go on to be entered into a national competition. So congratulations to our DPW employees.
Yeah.
It was quite the very ingenious device.
It was incredible. And it costs under $200 to make, so. And I'll make the second announcement. The Village of Warwick Bocci Ball Court near the Pavilion and Veterans Memorial Park is now open to the public. That was made by our Department of Public Works. They did a great job in its regulation size. And if we see there's enough interest, we may build another, but we're waiting to see that. And it looks just beautiful. I haven't seen anybody playing on it yet, but hopefully in the next weeks we will.
It was just written up in the paper last weekend.
Last weekend, yeah.
So people now start.
They'll acclimate, yeah. And do you want to talk about?
Yes, so tomorrow, August 2nd, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM, is the National Night Out 2022. So the Town of Warwick Police Department is partnering with the Warwick Valley Prevention Coalition to sponsor this national event. And we're happy to host it here in Memorial Park. And essentially what this is, it's a way to enhance the relationship between the community and law enforcement. So they're going to have, you know, touch a truck, food, games, live music, face painting, prizes, et cetera. And that is tomorrow night, August 2nd, from 5:30 to 8:30 PM in the Veterans Memorial Park.
Great. And it's the first one that we are doing in the village. There has been one in Greenwood Lake for a number of years. I don't believe they're having one this year. There's a larger event in Port Jervis. So it's a great family fun event. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Tom. So we privilege of the floor. If anybody would like to speak to the board, please state your name.
Hi, Cheryl Wodowski. On behalf of the Warwick Valley Farmers Market. And first off, I just want to say thank you to everyone, how much support you've given us over the years. And clarification earlier. We're almost halfway through the 2022 growing season. We've got about three more weeks to go and then we hit the midway point. We are, I'm going to start with a little positives.
Okay.
We are in the top three People's Choice Awards for farmers markets. We're just waiting to hear where we placed for second or third. We're hoping for first, but you never know. That should come, the announcement should come out shortly. And just to give you an update on attendance, year to date, we're at 23,865 people passing through the market. A little bit down from last year at the same point. We were at 25,193, but well above 2020, which was 14,985, and 2019, which was 10,808. Another positive, we are, I guess I should call ourselves sponsors. We're participating in the pilot composting program that Sustainable Warwick has undertaken. So we're really excited about that. We have the master gardeners with us every week at the market. So they'll be handling the education of proper composting and facilitating the process of getting all this great stuff collected and then distributed. So there have been some other farmers asking to participate in it as well, to accept the compost at the end of the day. I don't have all the deeds yet. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting they had, but I'm sure you'll see, you'll keep it up to date. And I think there was a Facebook post today from We Are Warwick.
We Are Warwick.
We Are Warwick, talking about the pilot project a little bit. So, and this is the negative and I apologize, but I feel like I need to address this. We just want to address the negative anti-farmers market campaign that's been going on. Apparently, a couple of local business persons have been approaching local, other local businesses in the area and talking to them about how detrimental the market is to their businesses, how it's costing them their businesses. These profiled businesses do not want to be identified, so I'm not going to disclose names or anything. These same persons who are trying to coerce this type of negative information from their fellow merchants. We also failed to make claims about the market, you know, about the condition of the parking lot, how they have to clean it on Monday mornings. We've been here for over 29 years. We keep that market clean, that space clean. On Sunday mornings, when we come in, not recently so much, but it's happened in the past, we've had to clean up vomit, garbage, cigarette butts, drug paraphernalia, and even dead ducks. And that's all on a Sunday morning before the market begins. We certainly don't want anybody else to experience what we experience. And again, it's improved, the quality's gotten better, but just, you know, and just asking everyone involved to please take all these things into consideration as you make your decisions. So I'm going to end with that. Thank you.
Yeah. And that's, I'm so sorry to hear that.
Oh, it's so distressing.
Yeah, it is very distressing.
We've actually, Linda, we've actually even been told that we're a bunch of phony farmers. So it's disheartening. It really is. So I'm not a farmer. I'm not a vendor, I'm a treasurer. But my bosses are farmers. It's, it's, yes.
It's okay.
It's all right. We just closed on property that now makes our farm over 500 acres. So we're not a phony farmer. And to have merchants go around saying that we're phony farmers, it's horrible.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. And if I can find out who the instigators are, I would like to know, so. And speak to them face to face, because it's, there's nothing worse than spreading that kind of negativity and false.
It's like hatred being shoved at the market.
Yeah.
It's just not called for at all.
Sir, do you have anything?
Take the spotlight over my tears.
Thank you for having us here tonight. And my name is William Ashby. I'm actually a vendor at the market and I'm also the vice chair along with Cheryl on the steering committee. Let me start off. I've been coming to the market for over 12 years. Before that, I didn't even know Warwick even existed on a map until I found out about the market and I've been coming here ever since. And over the last four years, my personal business is now a vendor in the market because I've seen how well the Warwick Farmers Market is, how much of a family unit it is, and what it's brought to the town. The question that I do want to ask, that is kind of weighed on me a little bit since this come up, what has brought up the possible relocation of the market from where we're at now off of Bang Street in the parking lot?
That was a sidebar on the real conversation about closing Bang Street and safety. And just that it was like, well, what if, you know? Is there a better option? Is there a safer place? Is there, you know? So we just, we brought that up because it just seemed, well, maybe there is. And we should investigate it, not that, we're not forcing or telling anybody anything. If anything, it's a cooperative dialogue. And, you know, if it doesn't make any sense, we're not going to push it, so. And as I mentioned before, I think the article in the paper kind of alluded to that. And that wasn't what the meeting was about, the board meeting was about, so.
All right. And just to add to that, so I've spoken with Thomas on this before. I've done some measurements. If worst came to worst and Bang Street did have to open, we only need 20 of the orange barriers. I did a full mark out on it. It would be two to block off the one entrance on the far left-hand side. And then the other 18 would be able to use and bump out if we had to, to be able to move the spotlight vendors into the market and do some shifting around. But that's all we would really need from it. We don't need 30. About 20 of them should be more than suffice if we had to come down to that. I wouldn't want to see that happen, but if it has to, we can try to make that work.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah. I'm Matt Sullivan. I live at 33 Galloway Road in the village. I just wanted to bring up the topic of the sewage treatment plant. Just to ask a few questions about the plant and kind of what the status is and, you know, things like that. First, why was the project, you know, anybody that wants to answer, that's fine. Why was the project necessary? What came up that motivated us to get a quote on expansion and modernization?
Because our plant was antiquated, basically. The amount of repairs that we were doing on a continual, on a regular basis, it was sort of like having a very old car. You know, suddenly it's no longer sustainable because it costs so much. Barry, you might want to chime in. I think the DEC was involved.
Yeah, I mean, they, they know, you know, we report everything that goes on. We've been meeting our discharge standards. But at the same time, the equipment, particularly the rotating biological contactors, were very, becoming very fragile. They were breaking down a lot. We had to do very expensive repairs. Major repair on those would have been about $40,000 per unit. So at that point in time, we were seeing more of these fail. When probably back in 2012, 2011, 2010, 2011, we had seven of the 15 that were out of service. We've worked to put them back into service, the ones that we were able to do, and have had a program that's kind of helped us limp along. But we saw that it was necessary to probably do a major overhaul of those units. And therefore, we decided to take a look at whether there were other technologies that would provide us with the ability to upgrade the plant technologically and create a better situation, all in all, for the village and its residents.
So would it be fair to say that in the analysis, that was determined that in the long run, it would be less expensive to modernize and expand than to continue to repair the facility?
Well, I think we kind of dismissed the repair aspect of it because we'd gotten to the point where replacement in kind of that technology would have been better than trying to repair it and limp along. So when that came about, we then decided to take a look at alternative technologies, newer technologies that have been more used in recent years than the RBC units.
Okay. So it sounds like it's fair to say that investment made more sense than continuing to repair the current facility?
Most definitely, because there are shafts and bearings and alignment is very important. And so they can get out of alignment and then the shaft ends up being scored and you basically have to replace the shaft and the bearings.
Okay. So there's no authority compelling us at this point to do the repairs, unlike the DEC is not saying we've got a deadline and we have potential fines if we don't complete the project by a certain deadline?
We are not under any order of consent relative to that. However, as we see these units go out of service because of bearing or shaft failures, that impacts our ability to treat the wastewater. And that would then in turn potentially cause us to violate our permit conditions, which would then put us very quickly into a consent order.
So we're, it's preemptive.
Yes.
So the, I'm sure there were replacement reserves that were created for all the different facilities in the village. I mean, how are we paying for this? I know we've got a $3 million grant, I believe, from an entity, right?
We have an, I'm sorry. We have an infrastructure reserve, which isn't, when we put it into place, it wasn't very robust. But over the past five years, we've been projecting, you know, putting money aside so that it will cover the cost of this entire project.
When will, so we have full capitalization at this time to?
Not yet. Not yet.
No.
How far away are we?
What, well.
Money-wise?
I think at this point, we're getting $3 million of the $12 million.
Is the $12 million locked in or is inflation an aspect?
Well, inflation could be an aspect of that. We haven't gotten an update. The plant is still in the design phase. And once design is complete, which hopefully will be towards the end of this year, we will have a much better idea, hopefully, as to what the, what the costs more than likely will be. We won't know until we actually go out.
So how much do we have saved up so far for the project?
I think we've got, is it a million and a half or two?
I think it's closer actually to almost three.
Almost, okay.
Three million. So we've got, we're about six out of 12, so about half.
So a couple of years ago, there was a sewer land tax that was instilled. So that's around $900,000 per year. And so we've had a couple of years to build up those reserves.
So we've got about three of it right now?
About three.
Okay, good. So we've got about, how are we going to come up with the rest of the capital? It seems like it's not urgent, but it's an important project to be done as soon as possible. So how will we raise the funds for the remaining $6 million? Or maybe the remaining $8 million? Who knows?
We have basically two options. One, we can go through funding from EFC, a low-interest loan from the Environmental, New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. It's part of their revolving loan fund. Or we can, if we feel that rates would be better, we can go out for borrowing.
And with a bond, that's?
Yes, yes. And the way we've structured what Tom had mentioned about the land tax assessment that was created two or three years ago, that it would be used in its entirety to pay the remaining interest and principal on the years that are left on it.
And if, when and if we go out to bond, we would probably do a bond anticipation note, which is a five-year note, and hopefully pay it off by then so that we would not have a long-term bond commitment or debt. And that's something that we've done with infrastructure projects all along the way, mostly because we realize that as soon as we're finished with this project, there'll be another one. And it will be.
We've got plenty of other projects to fix.
You know we do, yeah.
And of course, the water system is another huge obstacle that we've got to face. So, I mean, it seems as though we were not really putting aside the funds that we needed for this particular project or for this particular facility. How are we doing with other replacement cost reserves? Are we plenty enough, enough funds for, you know, street repairs, sewer repairs, and water repairs? Have we increased those funds, you know, the budgeting for replacement cost reserves, you know, to start to catch up for the future? Are we looking at that?
We are looking at that. And it's to find balance, Matt, because you also, it means raising taxes. And we are also trying to stay within our tax cap limit. And so we've, we try to figure out what, where can that, where is the best way to refurbish those funds or replenish those funds or to make sure those funds are available? And, you know, it's definitely difficult, a challenge.
It's a challenge.
But it's not impossible. And also, there are grants that are available and we go after them. Right now, we, you know, we're going after money for well number three. That's, you know, a very important project. And hopefully we'll get it, so.
You know, I've got this concept, like, I'm a fisherman. When I go out in the woods, I pick stuff up. I always try to leave it better than when I, than the way I found it. And hopefully you guys take the same attitude about the village. Because obviously, these types of things have been ignored for a long time. And not ignored, but not kept up with.
Most of them haven't even been brought to light. There was a long period of time when, when it was like, don't confuse me with the problems that we're faced with.
Right.
And so I think that one of the things that as a board we've tried to do in the last 10-plus years has been to assess what our needs are and look at where our, our infrastructure needs to be updated because it's, you know, no longer serving the way it should.
Going back to water, you know, we, we have dealt with our well structures. Well number two, which is a microfiltration plant, brand new and a great asset. We're working on well number three. Hopefully that will be, you know, completely completed in another year. And then from there, we have our water treatment plant, which at this point in time, we're looking at it as, you know, it needs to be brought into the 21st century.
And so the water pipes out in the streets. I know we had a leak over in Clinton about a month ago that created a little bit of damage. So anyway, you know, these things are important. I spoke to Dick Purcell, Barry, and he said he's waiting for a phone call from you, something about doing a walkthrough at the plant, at the sewage treatment plant. Was that, I think you and Mike had spoken to Dick about that when he was here last month?
I don't.
Oh, right. Oh, yes, okay, yes, Dick, yeah.
I'd like to be on that tour if you're going to do it. I'd like to take a look at it.
Sure.
So is that, how can we communicate? How can we arrange that?
We know how to get ahold of each other. I'll, I'll talk to Dick and you and, yeah.
Okay. Thanks for all your hard work. I always appreciate it.
Availability during the day, good?
Yeah, very often.
If you can figure it out.
Very often, yeah.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We had some new people enter the room.
We promise not to take a lot of your time up. I will ask Emily Gounds to come here this evening. Emily's with Emily's Hearth Pizza. As part of that anti-farmers market negative campaign I mentioned earlier, she has come under direct fire and has been, it has been said that she is still selling and baking at 3 o'clock in the afternoon and the market hours are 9 to 2. So I asked Emily to please come in and just address that.
Yeah, so I would say there are times that we are there late or beyond 2 o'clock when the shut-off of the market is. Typically, it's open and we take orders until 2 PM. And I'd say the busiest time for us since we are like a lunch food and the market's 9 AM until 2 PM. We're most busy between noon, 12:30, and 2:00. So we get a lot of orders towards the end of the day. And though the oven is quite large, I can only fit two pizzas in there at a time. So it takes quite, and everything's made by hand and takes its time. So the only reason we would be there past 2 o'clock would be to just fulfill those orders. And, you know, it's, it's like a mini restaurant. You know, we make all the food fresh. We cut everything up there. We do a lot of our prep there. So even just breaking everything down, cleaning it up, washing all of our stuff, like that takes a bit of time, like it would to like break down a restaurant at the end of the day. So it takes at least an hour for us to clean up without much to do, you know? So I'd say if somebody has a problem with that, that's really the only reason why. We're not trying to stay there and like compete with other businesses. We're just trying to fulfill the orders that we had taken by 2 PM. So.
Makes sense. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, no, no problem. And I don't know exactly what the issues are, if that, if it's just staying open later or just not breaking down soon enough. Like, is it just an orchestration of where I am in the market? Or I don't know.
You know, this is more.
Somebody else?
Telephone around the village and hasn't come to us as, you know, somebody complaining.
Okay.
So we haven't received any of these complaints.
Oh, okay.
And so that's interesting. And we'll try to get to the bottom of it to find out.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Of course, no problem.
I mean, I've been down there when, when the.
Yeah, I see you passing through.
Right. Right. When, when the market's kind of folding up and cars can come in. I mean, it's not like it's a no-fly zone and it's, you know, it just, it just takes a while. I mean, I understood, there's a lot of.
And actually, where we are set up, we are not, we aren't actually blocking any parking spaces. I think we're like right in the crosswalk area where there's like right by PEX, there's two spots, two spots and then one spot. So we're sort of in the area, right, there's only that one spot and then there's an open space and then the, those yellow, like don't park here lines. So that's usually where we're set up and people can really get around us.
Right.
But I'm certainly happy to, happy to like work it out with people. I don't, you know, I'm just trying to be informed and also be here to be honest.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Of course, no problem.
Okay. Anyone else, well, before we move on? Hi, Annette. Okay. So thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. And we'll move to motion. And Barry, do you want to start?
Motion to grant permission to Village of Warwick employee Art Wendell to carry over five vacation days.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion number two has been withdrawn. Number three, motion to adopt the Village of Warwick's Policy Against Discrimination and Harassment effective August 1st, 2022. The policy will replace Section 9.6 of the Village of Warwick Employee Handbook entitled Sexual Harassment and the Village of Warwick's Policy Against Discrimination and Harassment that was adopted on December 6th, 2019.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to refund Liberty Green III in the amount of $5,000 total for pilot overpayments made during fiscal years 2018, 19 to 2022, 23 for Liberty Green III, Section 230, Lot 1, Block 1.13, due to a billing statement error.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Tom?
Motion to approve the New York State Local Retirement System's standard workday reporting resolution for Village of Warwick Planning Board Member and Chairman Jesse Gallo with a record of activities of 0.89 days worked per month.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Wayne Greenblatt as zoning board of appeals member with a term of August 1, 2022, to April 5, 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to appoint Vanessa Holland as an alternate planning board member with a term of August 1, 2022, to April 3, 2023.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there was a TAM.
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion to authorize payment to TAM Enterprises, Inc. in the amount of $14,088.50 for the wastewater Robert Drive Valve Vault per payment application number one, as certified by Village Engineer David Getz of Engineering Properties. Funds are appropriated in budget code F.8340.4 in the 2022-23 budget.
Okay.
Second. Discussion?
Yep.
Barry, maybe you can help. What is this valve vault?
Okay. It has a pressure-reducing, it has a pressure-reducing valve in it. So there are spots where there's too much pressure because it's come down from the tank. So this then reduces the pressure so that.
From before Robert?
It's on Robert Drive. So the, the lower properties on Robert Drive, if this wasn't there, the pressures would be too high in their homes. So we, as you go down the hill, the pressure rises, of course, because the tank's up at the top. And we have a number of these throughout the village.
Yeah, okay. We blow their plumbing out otherwise.
Got it. So there was one, but now it's replaced.
Yes, yeah, the, yes. We're doing a little better job of plumbing it and also replacing the valve. They were out over time. That was probably built in the, I want to say, the late 70s, early 80s.
Got it.
Okay. So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Final comments?
Just another reminder for. Just another reminder for everyone that the village's annual water quality report is available online on the village website, so if you would like, you can retrieve that from the website. If you don't have that capability and would like a copy, you can contact Village Hall.
Okay.
I will just add, I spoke to Chief Raider earlier today, and the, the Junior Police Academy.
Yep.
They just wrapped up the first session and graduated 19 students, which I think is great, and the second one with 20 students starts today.
Yeah, that's fantastic. It's, it's been well-received and, you know, it's great we have an activity like that. We just had a graduation at the Community Center of the Leadership Academy, that's now in its fifth year, I believe, and it's a pioneer program that the Community Center has done here for those, you know, 7th, 8th, 9th graders. It's such a perfect time to kind of instill leadership or these kinds of things. So I'm, I'm very grateful, glad that they're doing the academy.
And the chief is, he's happy to come to the next meeting, he says, to talk about that.
To report.
And also the, I guess to recap the national night out.
Good, good.
That's it. And I guess that's, for, comes to the board, I guess I'll just end my piece by saying I appreciate the farmers market.
I love that pressure you have behind you.
Yeah.
It's placement.
I just want to mention some of the activities of the board that are going on behind the scenes. Each board member is a, has responsibilities and is a liaison, and they take it very seriously. And so for example, Corey Bachman is working on something called the CLG Program, which is a certified local government program, which is kind of a revamping of our Architecture Review Board. And what it does, it allows greater tax, ability to get tax credits for historic preservation. Also, it grants, it opens up the avenue for grants. And then Tom is working on an environmental advisory board, and we'll be having a work session on that in the, in the near future so that we can move forward with that. And Carly Foster is working on the Memorial Park Master Plan Committee, that's just formed, and that will be moving forward in the next month. And then Barry is working on LED streetlights and well number three and wastewater treatment plant, and what else? Barry, you're, you've got your hands.
Let's stop there.
Yeah, okay, we'll stop there. But anyway, I just want to, you know, sometimes people don't realize that there's so much activity that happens, not at this table, but, you know, on, on a regular basis by this board, and when it, when it comes to fruition, you know, as administrative, you know, or legislation, that's when it happens, but it doesn't happen by magic, it happens by a lot of work behind the scenes, so. Anyway, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all so much for what you do for us.
Thank you.
Because it doesn't just impact us here. That's my little soapbox. Thank you again.
Thanks, all.
Thank you very much.